I want to call the meeting to order for the votes, Selectmen. Can I have a roll call, please?
We're all Selectmen present and Mr. Town Council is here as well.
Debbie's here.
Okay. All right, so the reason why we're here is to catch up on these motions. First, we have Article 4, which is free cash destabilization. And I need someone, the motion that I have is I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $875,148 from certified free cash to stabilization fund. Eight seventy-five, one forty-eight.
Second in the question.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Discussion.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I just, that's a one-way, correct? One eighty?
Yes.
What did you say it was, one eighty-seven?
Eight seventy-five, one forty-eight.
Eight seventy-five, one forty-eight is going into the stabilization.
Into the stabilization.
Not coming out. There's nothing coming out.
Nothing's coming out, it's going in. This'll get us to four percent, I believe, which is really pretty good.
That's when we make sure there was nothing coming out.
All right, so, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. So, could you write, Selectmen, vote five zero zero, please.
It would be known that if you had the votes here for the Cemetery Commission, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, next I have the capital items, let's see, what articles are they? Electric, criminal, jurisdiction, where's the capital? Do they know which article it is?
Two.
Yep, two, Article two.
Is it Article two? Okay, so, Article two, I have the capital list. He's gonna give us that, that's what I've been waiting for. Call town meeting, oh, that's my man, all right. So, Article two, this is what I have. I have fuel pump recorder, forty-five thousand. Two one-ton, thirty-five-hundred trucks with plows, hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Three-quarter-ton, twenty-five-hundred truck with plows, fifty thousand. LED streetlights, fifty thousand. Deacon's PA system, ninety thousand. Deacon's study boiler, E-roof, sixty thousand. Tasers, twelve thousand five hundred. For a total cost of four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand five hundred. Is this still correct?
No, no, this is, these are the motions.
Okay.
It's Article two.
All right, hold on.
Move that Article two...
All right, so, it's the Deacon's PA is ninety thousand.
Two one-ton, three thirty...
Thirty-five-hundred trucks with plows, one twenty-five. One three-quarter-ton, twenty-five-hundred truck with plow and equipment, fifty thousand. Streetlights, fifty thousand. Fuel pump and fuel recorder system, forty-five thousand, same thing. Police tasers, twelve thousand five hundred. And EMS RAM supervisor vehicle, capital lease, eighteen thousand five hundred. That came from the Walmart fund.
Is the total still the four-thirty-two?
Uh, no, it is not.
No, no way.
Three-seventy-two, five hundred is the total from free cash, eighteen thousand five hundred from the Walmart.
So, there you go.
So...
A motion made by Mrs. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Holmes.
Question.
Uh, go ahead.
Just to verify, I could quite hear, the money for this eighteen thousand five is coming out of Walmart fund.
Yeah.
And the rest of this is coming out of free cash.
Correct.
Not the stabilization fund.
Not stabilization.
Part of the balance that's left.
Correct, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. You will vote?
I will vote. Let's go to the Deacon's here.
Okay, so, it's four, one, zero. The vote is four, one, zero.
Who's the senator?
Uh, Mr. Holmes.
Well, you know, he raises a good point, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that point.
Which point?
Probably saying that ninety thousand dollars for this PA system...
Yeah.
For a school that they might be tearing down?
Well...
Would we really invest a hundred thousand in it?
Well, let's make it perfectly clear, we would have to get an override to build a new school from two schools from the people which would take...
Or a debt exclusion.
That's what I mean, a debt exclusion, which would take five years to probably get through anyway. And in the means, you know, it's gonna be, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, I can tell you that. So, I don't really see how that's a bad expenditure.
Can you give us the numbers again?
The total numbers, could you give them to us again, the totals, please?
Three-seventy-two, five, I believe, off the top of my head.
Yep.
About eighteen thousand five.
We got the eighteen thousand.
Okay.
All right, the summit jobs, we did that, stabilization. Now, did you change some transfers from...
Transfer to Article one, we'll see. We'll see, it's got the amount in there, five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars.
Right.
From certified free cash to cover the FY-15 snow and ice deficit as of June 30, 2015. And the other transfers are transferring eighty-six thousand five hundred nine dollars, five-hundred-and-ninety dollars from the non-debt budget line to this one.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, five zero zero.
Does that take the snow and ice now down to zero?
Yes, that's the deficit.
So then we now at zero, yeah.
We still have, we have snow and ice, that was for the deficit for last year. We still have, what is it, what do we got in there, three-hundred something?
Yep, for the three-twenty-two.
Three-twenty-two for this year is in there.
For this past year.
For this winter coming.
Do we budget it that much?
That's what we budgeted for that, this one, three-twenty-two. Uh, you changed something in the harbor master's line, right?
Yes.
Do we need to re-vote? Which article is that, please?
The Article fifteen, we're going to utilize instead of the waterways account, twenty-five thousand from the harbor service permits.
Okay, so, we originally, I need somebody to...
Okay, I need, move to reconsider Article fifteen.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Holmes. To reconsider Article fifteen. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, so, the new one says, I move that the town transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand from the harbor services permits receipt reserve for appropriation of down to the harbor master's maintenance and improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. And I think that's it, right? Everything else is done.
When he says, anyone's supposed to speak, tell what the other members know.
All right, so, does anybody, anybody else have any other discussions relevant to the town meeting articles that you want to talk about before we finish here?
I have a question on...
Okay, Pete, sorry, Alan, you go first.
I talked to Rich about the article eighteen, which has basically the town administrator or his appointees, local bylaws and zoning bylaws. The zoning bylaws, we already have things on the books that, we already have, the enforcement officer to charge that and control that. I was gonna make a, I was gonna get up to town meeting and change after the week where it said zoning bylaws. How do you like clean it that way? I think we got issues with it, it said zoning bylaws and bylaws.
Well, 'cause there are zoning bylaws that are not enforced by the zoning office, is that correct? Could I have the town council weigh in on this?
Just reached for the vote.
Oh, okay. Hold on one minute.
Maybe I'll just stand up.
Yeah, you can stand up, you look good standing up.
You look better sitting down, so it's okay.
Go.
Especially if you're all members of the board, that's all.
So, we have a, so, we have a new motion on Article eighteen. I'll read it. I move that the town amend the bylaws by creating a new Division Twelve, Article One, title Enforcement, Section One, to read, the town administrator or his or her designees may act as enforcement officer for any town bylaw. And further, the town create a revolving fund to which enforcement fines will be credited, said fund to be expended by the town administrator or his designate for purposes of paying for enforcement activities with a capital one-hundred thousand dollars in place in such fund. What this motion does is it creates a new section of the general bylaws, not the zoning bylaws, that allows the town administrator to, for, we know he won't be doing it, but to appoint somebody who will do it.
Okay, that's fine.
Now, over on the zoning side, what could happen, I'll say theoretically at this point, is for the zoning enforcement officials to deputize persons to act with them...
Within the scope of the...
Uh, probably within the scope of what they're doing right now. Uh, which brings us to the key part of this, which is the revolving fund, which provides that all the fines that go in will be used to pay for the enforcement person so designated. So, for example, Derek designated me to be the enforcement person. Uh, no, designated Debbie to be the enforcement person.
Oh.
Yeah, you got some real tough stuff there. So, Deborah's gonna go out and enforce, she'll levy fines. The building commissioner could designate Deborah to go out and do enforcement as well, but the proceeds that came in either side go into the revolving fund to pay for Deborah's...
Okay, awesome.
I move reconsideration of Article eighteen.
Okay, so, here, second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, uh, seconded by Mr. Holmes, to reconsider Article eighteen. All right, now, what do you want to do? Shall we just accept the new motion?
No, we need to vote on reconsideration.
Yeah, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous.
And now I make a motion.
Favorite action of the new motion.
New motion.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Did you give that to the moderator? She already has it?
Madam Moderator has it, it'll be up on the floor.
Awesome, okay, you.
Mr. Fincom, what about this?
Does the Fincom know?
That I don't know.
Could you walk it over to them, please?
Over to them.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, anything else? Peter, go ahead.
Yep, starting on Friday and then again today, I've been in conversations with the Chairman of the Conservation Commission. He was very concerned that the bylaw would go away. He explained to me that they actually had, I guess, taken some additional steps to engage in a rewrite, which was the whole purpose of the article to believe anyway, was to force some action here. So, as of late this afternoon, four o'clock, we agreed to ask town meeting for further study of this. I put together a further study article, and so I would like to get a reconsideration of the prior vote here because this leaves the existing bylaw in place, which I know was a concern, it was just a couple of the people voted against the original.
So, you're putting a motion on to reconsider Article twenty-five?
Right.
Second, okay. Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Slaven, to reconsider Article twenty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, so, this is what, so, we're going to...
Further study with the committee as described.
As described, okay. Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, you have the motion in your hand.
I'll second for discussion.
And a second made by Ms. Whiteside. Any discussion? All right, go ahead, Mr. Slaven, please.
Who's gonna be appointing the...
Specified there.
The Chairman of the Conservation Commission.
It's gonna be the Chairman and one of their members. They're real appointments.
You should, we should have an appointment for...
Absolutely, this concerns all the people, you need elected people in this, and you need to get this done.
Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum.
I don't like the mix to...
It's the only way you're gonna get this done, Steve.
I don't like the anchor.
Well, you can vote against it if you want.
It's a team chose.
Exactly, that's what we do. You want to solve problems, Steve, you choose the people who get it done. That's what we do with junk study, that's what we do with the dog bylaw.
You can have the Conservation Commission select their own members, you can have the Board of Selectmen select their own members.
You have the Chairman of those bodies appointing members, that's a prerogative of the Chairman, typically.
Well, if the...
Well, that's basically what it says.
No, it doesn't.
Says the Chairman selects.
It says the Chairman selects.
Why don't the Board of Selectmen select our members?
We don't have confidence in our Chairman, is that what I'm hearing?
We don't have confidence in our Board.
I expect the Chairman to make the right decisions. He does for liaisons.
Open and transparency?
Open and transparency.
I don't see why, how we do it, it's up to you guys. But it doesn't make any difference to me whether I appoint it or the Board appoints it, it doesn't mean anything. It's, it's, somebody's gonna get appointed either way.
Let me ask the devil's advocate question. The junk study committee was appointed by the Moderator, right? Okay, the time specific, which is based on... And there were bodies, you know, giving that motion, right? One from, one from, one from, one from.
That was different, and that was my motion as well. That was different because we were essentially investigating an entirely new area of law.
Okay, and my point was...
At this point, we know, we know what the law is, we know what the interests are, and with this, we'll know we can get it done.
Okay, let me just finish my question, which was, on the junk study, there was no Selectmen, but you went to virtually every meeting, am I correct?
Yes, he was the liaison.
He was the liaison, yes, but there was no Selectmen on that.
There was none, no Selectmen appointed.
But you can't appoint a Selectman if this passes town meetings.
I'm just asking a question.
Right.
Yeah, I think we should have a place on the, since we have to defend these cases, I think absolutely we should have a place.
Nobody's suggesting you don't, you know what I mean?
I hope you showed that at all.
Nobody's suggesting.
Might not be such a bad idea to have somebody from ZBA. Any on ZBA in there?
But then you're taking away the Moderator's ability to appoint one.
Why, she couldn't, she can't appoint?
Moderator appoints anybody.
Moderator appoints the zoning bylaw committee, well, because it's gonna be...
You also don't have an experienced ZBA, and you do have an experienced planning board.
It's an attorney.
That's a big state.
The Chairman of the ZBA is chairman.
Yeah, we...
And there's also a real state that I like.
I don't have a problem with having somebody from there, you have a problem with somebody from the ZBA? I don't see why there should be an issue. Add them in here, so what?
So, you want to scratch the one citizen and have a ZBA?
Yeah, I think that's more realistic, is it not?
I think it makes more sense in terms of communication.
It makes more sense, right?
So, do you want to, do you want to change it to one member from the ZBA?
Yeah.
If you really consider the citizen, make it two citizens.
Making two citizens?
Then we have seven members of the pillars.
Well, the seven-member boards are tough, because you have four of us, just four of us all, it's just not...
It's not gonna define the law. It's not gonna be transparent at all.
How's it not transparent?
You think they're gonna beat the laws?
He's gonna be beaten with this guy.
Who has it?
This guy's gonna pick this member, there's three votes. It's only a five-member committee? Everybody has the three votes.
Who has the three votes?
Board of Selectmen.
Three votes for what?
And his appointee.
Three votes for what?
He's already talking to the guy, there's three votes right there.
Well, we have the, we have two from the Conservation Commission. We're gonna have one from, did we say one from...
Like he said, I can vote, no, you all can vote, yes.
Yeah, you know, but I want to make, look, we try to work these up so we get a...
One member.
One from the ZBA, right? Member from the ZBA.
But should it be, should it be one member from the ZBA who's the Chair?
By the Chairman of the ZBA, I already wrote that in.
You want to have two citizens at large?
How you make it?
I mean, look, Clay's pretty good at that.
Yeah, the ZBA, and the ZBA, it's still six members.
You can make it.
So, for four, we need four anyways.
What do you mean?
If you have six members.
But if you have seven, you need four, if you have six, you need four.
Right, but if you have five, you need three, so where do we get the five or six?
But we already added one, anyway.
Yeah, but I thought you were scratching the citizen for that. I thought you were scratching the citizen in favor of the ZBA.
Yes.
So, that's five.
I was just saying, if we had the ZBA, you have more satisfied. Or you go to Conservation Commission and ask the one member.
Once, you can't get three members of Conservation on there, 'cause now you got four of them.
No, you're gonna remove one. Just leave the Chairman on there.
No, 'cause I think, Conservation needs to have a good stake in this, I mean, even I can see that.
Yeah, they need to have a serious stake, it's their bylaw, they gotta have, they gotta have more irons in the fire.
And then the two.
All right, so, just add two at large, it'll work.
Get four members to show up.
All right, and it'll be fine, four will show up all the time.
By Moderator.
All right.
And two citizens, right. Well, the Moderator appoints...
The Moderator appoints.
On top, and then everything below follows. You don't have to say appoints.
No, I know, but, so, the motion has already been made.
The motion with the...
With the changes.
You agreed to the changes?
Yep.
Okay.
And I agree to the changes.
And you agreed to the changes, okay. So, the motion's made by Mr. Titlebaum with the change in, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I prefer the vote.
Okay, so, it's four, one, zero.
Wait, wait, wait. He calls the vote, that's...
Well, no, it's okay, it's okay.
I think it's a serious issue.
What's the issue?
There are people very concerned about this issue, we're taking away this bylaw that was tried here at this meeting.
Yes.
And now you're forming a committee that's in-picked by this Chairman, he's already said he's been on talking to them. So, they already know who's on the committee.
I don't always...
Let the boards select their own members, what is the problem with that? Why does it have to be, you can't trust the Board of Selectmen to vote and pick a member to serve on a board?
I mean, typically...
Come on, this isn't a liaison, this is a voting member who's gonna represent the Board of Selectmen.
But Steve, typically, we use all the...
It's not liaison, it's not liaison. There's a vote here in this board.
Yes.
Just like we do with the other ones, we vote for the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. That's not really a liaison decision, we vote for that person.
Because that's how it's set up.
The five of us vote for that person.
Because it's set up that way in the town charter.
So, this is predetermined, in my opinion, in the opinion of many.
Well, this is predetermined for what? Wait a minute, wait, Steve, let me see, what is the ultimate, what are they saying? What are you trying to say? That this board is tainted because of what?
I think, I think the whole process by throw, by trying to throw this bylaw out tonight, which was the ultimate goal.
Right.
Was to throw this bylaw out so that the time, town arrives for the next six to twelve months without a bylaw and relying on a state bylaw.
But that's not what they decided to do.
I understand that, that's how we came here tonight at six o'clock.
Because this bylaw, I believe, if we don't come here at six o'clock, it would be gone.
Because if y'all knew about this today, that would be a violation of the open meeting law. Come on.
Then we knew about what?
This. When we came here at six o'clock tonight...
We just got from here.
When we came here at six o'clock tonight, we were under the impression that we were going out there and you were gonna take away a bylaw to stop a bylaw.
Correct.
Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we get here at six o'clock, Peter has met with other, with his committee Chairman, they've all agreed on this, we're getting the issue, and there needs to be some transparency here. That's what I'm saying.
But there is transparency.
We have no, no assignments as Board of Selectmen members to voting bodies where the five of us don't do a vote on that. To say, Patrick, you want to serve on this? Yeah, we all vote on it. Patrick, Peter, you want to serve on this? We all vote on it. Every time, and now all of a sudden with this one, we're not gonna do it. And these other boards are gonna have the opportunity to do it.
This is, I think the Chairman of the Conservation Commission wanted to have...
It's a he-picked committee, basically what you call it.
A chance to pick who he wanted to pick, obviously. And he wanted to sit on it himself.
The board should support and vote for that member. I'm not saying I wouldn't vote for any one of our members, I just feel that if we're putting somebody on a voting committee, the five of us should vote on that. It's not a liaison, right? Is it a liaison? No, it's a voting member. Big difference.
All right, so, the motion, there's still a motion on the floor, we have to vote on.
That's not, that's not the, that's not what they want.
We just voted four, one, zero.
You just, we could reconsider.
May I reconsider? Vote to reconsider the vote that was taken.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven, to reconsider Article twenty-five. All right, so, what's your pleasure here? I don't, I mean, I just see...
Can I speak to this for a minute?
You're gonna have the board select their members to this committee?
This is what I worked out with the Chairman of the Conservation this morning, I just presented to the Fincom this afternoon, just now. I mean, we're gonna go into town meeting with something entirely different, it's not making sense.
Well, well, what authorization did you have to go meet with these boards on behalf of the Board of Selectmen? Why are we being handcuffed to that, what you did with these other committees?
Well, we're not handcuffed to that.
Well, nobody else was doing anything, your big concern was we were gonna blow up the bylaw, and this is why, so, I don't see why you make such a big deal about this.
No, because it's a handpicked committee, that's why.
I don't see what you mean by handpicked.
It's not supported by the local boards.
I don't see how it's handpicked, I don't know what you mean by that.
Does any board, does any board select?
As long as this, who cares how they get there, as long, if there's two members...
I happen to be one.
Steve, if there's two members from, from the, from one board and one from another and one from another, how is it handpicked?
Mr. Chairman, I ask you to call for the vote. I can just vote, no, it's not a big deal. I can do this however you like.
Okay, I...
You heard him, just vote now.
Well, we just voted to reconsider, so...
I prefer to have boards who assign members to voting positions, I prefer the board to take a vote on. That's all.
And I would, I would...
Many a six years, I've never done it any different, all of a sudden with this, it's a big difference. I don't know why, you're absolutely right.
It doesn't really matter.
It doesn't really matter.
It doesn't, it really depends on...
So, one member of the Board of Selectmen take from there on out, one member of the Board of Selectmen.
For some reason, they want these assigned by these...
By the, yeah, I hear what he's saying, and it does look down.
I don't know why.
Then you want to say anything on Conservation.
Yeah.
You can't do that, I worked, this is, it's all been...
It's all worked out, it's all worked out before you brought it to us.
Well, but he worked it out with the Chairman.
Just take the vote, let him have what he wants, people will complain.
Well, they're not gonna complain.
And I'll support those complaints.
You can do that too.
I think we can get around it if we leave, leave the first...
He's already gone with it, you heard him.
Can I just finish what I was saying? The first paragraph would be the same, second one, the Chairman of Conservation and one member of the Conservation, one member of the Board of Selectmen, period, one member of the Planning Board, period.
Can't do that.
Yeah, we can.
Because he's already gone, he just told you, no.
Excuse me, this is what I'm, now...
It's just the Conservation Commission, we don't care what they, what he did over there. All we're changing is the way that these guys go.
So...
And one member of the zoning board.
One member of the zoning board.
And two members.
And two members chosen by the Moderator.
Right.
That, I, did we vote on the reconsideration?
Yes, we did.
And Clay would pick two.
Yes, sir.
So, make it two, four, six.
That'd be seven.
No, seven, because it's...
We still need four, yeah.
If you're gonna decide who does the work on this board, who doesn't, but I don't leave it at that.
All right, so, it'd be seven.
It would be seven, and it would be four.
All right, so, everyone stays except for the...
If you wanted to keep it at five, who would you remove?
Well, you can't.
You can't. You have to remove citizens.
Yeah, you have to remove citizens, and you don't want to do that.
I think zoning is important.
Well, this is, this isn't...
There's a silent support here.
This Conservation article, not zoning per se.
No, but any land use, it's good to have those people that have expertise in this area.
Yeah, you get the zoning board, we get the...
Yes.
So, we get the zoning board. All right, so, all right, so, we have a motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven.
For what?
For everything, the, Conservation stays exactly the same. The Chairman of the Board of Selectmen no longer appoints, and it's just one from the Board of Selectmen, one from the Planning Board, one from the zoning, and two appointed by the Moderator.
I'd like a clarification.
To what? Let's, let's deal with the article.
Well, that is...
So, there's a motion on the floor, made by you, in fact, seconded by the young man on the end of the table. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, not at the end of the table.
No, I'm talking about the other young.
Oh, the other young.
Yeah, the young guy. All in favor of this motion as discussed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstaining, okay. It's four, one, zero. It's gonna be four, one, zero, one way or the other, I guess.
So, but this is the change, are we voting to recommend now?
So, this, this is it, so, this is what we're going to do. All right, so...
Isn't it the same two?
Can I stay for one? Um, I think... Do we have any other motion?
Hold on.
One person should be representing.
Would you?
I don't care who they are.
Mine step in open information, financially. Mind stepping open in formation of finance?
We have a charter, we have a bylaw, bylaws that need to be followed.
They have another one?
It's getting old.
What did they vote?
See, I'll tell you something.
The FinCon?
Oh, you were. That's wrong.
Eight members?
Yeah. Well, if we're gonna do that, they've gotta take off one of the citizens at large if they want to be on it.
Why would the-
I have no idea, it has nothing to do with finance.
Does it say financing?
No, it doesn't, but they added themselves to it.
Who did?
They did. See what I mean?
I hope you got that point.
I don't have a dog in the fight.
Yeah. You want to come? You should have a dog in the fight, let people know what's going on.
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying.
It's getting sick, this goes on all the time. If I was away, this would have just blown right through. I hope you would, I hope you would. It's a charter of governance, it's a board. One member.
They volunteered themselves to be on the committee, to make this, well, Claire could appoint one of them.
Be on a non-financial board.
Yeah.
That's true. Claire could appoint one of them. Well, he could afford them as citizens, if one of them wants to be a citizen at large, sure.
She could do that, yeah, she could.
It's also her choice for selecting, the way you're writing it.
Well, it says, yeah, actually, it's her choice right now.
Which is fine.
Which is fine with me, I don't, because she'll, she'll ask any-
Because it really doesn't say at large, it just says that the moderator appoint, or what made by law study committee, five members.
Now it says seven, it's changed.
One citizen.
So it's now seven.
You made work to do with the finance committee.
And the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, which makes sense, by the way, the Chairman of ConCon being on there, and him choosing another member representative, that makes perfect sense. You know, it really does.
If you really want to protect it, you can have your Conservation agent as a ex-official on board.
Well, he would be an ex-official anyway, I would imagine.
I think he will type in that. Well, I would hope he would say. I like to do things, I like to do things in public.
They want one of the members to be from the FinCon, but one of the, the two citizens want to be from-
Yeah, take them, point one of them.
Right.
That's all.
But they want to be an official, an official as a-
Why do they need FinCon?
They just would like to be.[1650.12]